Grafton Board of Education meeting to order. Ask everyone to rise and join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. This is the portion of our meeting reserved for public comment. If there's anyone in the audience tonight who'd like to approach the board publicly and tell us something, this is the time to do it. All right, seeing no one, we'll move on to our next agenda item, which is the consent agenda items. There are two minutes to approve on a payment of the bills. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion to approve the minutes in the bill.
Is there a second? Any questions? Additions or corrections? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it passes. Our action items, we'll start with our superintendent's report. Mr. Nelson, you are up.
Yes, so it's unusual to have a board meeting on the first day of school. And so exciting, I'm starting to think it was the first day of school and maybe graduation are the two best days ever in a year, both beginning and the end or something. But our theme this year, we had new staff a week and a half ago. We had all staff last week and we shared the theme of honoring the past and moving forward in the future and emphasizing being flexible. And today was definitely a synopsis of everyone having to be flexible as it rained. You would not believe as you walk outside now that it could have rained as hard as it did this morning. As I was coming into work, it reminded me when I interviewed here, when I finished interviewing, it started drizzling and I was walking and trying to be professional and then it just started pouring. I remember running to my car as my suit is getting soaked and I needed dry cleaning because it was so wet. And that was sort of what today was like. So we have some pictures actually of what today looked like in each of our building. We had our district office administrators that went out and about to all the buildings and I was able to stop in and see each of the buildings today. So we just took a couple of pictures of each, we took a number of pictures. There's some videos, we won't show them, but we did have a lot of pictures. You can see students lining up at GES, some of the parents coming in with their families as they're coming in in the rain. And then also more students lining up with their sign. We have one of our staff members who's checking on a bus because we're trying to figure out, one of the shuttle issue is definitely on that first day of schools especially. Probably the biggest issue that we had today was shuttling both in the morning. At the end of the day, unfortunately, we got everyone straightened out. But that was through a lot of hard work of our staff. So staff were standing out, that's actually Rick Swype, standing out in the rain, trying to figure out which route that is and where they're supposed to be. And it was definitely raining at that point. So moving on to, looking at Kennedy, you see families, parents and some staff underneath the awning there as kids are coming in. Everyone's having to fit into the gym because there's nothing to do outside. And so you have, that area is full there. And then, I was even on the left as I was walking around because I was at John Long when they started and then I was at GES when they started. And I'd walked over, I didn't walk over, I drove over to Kennedy. While I was walking around, they had the, they had parents and students that were meeting with teachers of class of 2031. So they were in there ready to go that morning. And you can see one of our teachers leading kids down the walkway there at Kennedy as it's pouring rain and they're bringing them in and so forth. And then moving on to Woodview, some students coming in and there's definitely in all the buildings, it's just exciting. Everyone's excited, they're ready to go, they're excited to see their friends, their teachers. You know, the rain doesn't bother the kids as much as it does the adults. So you see kids that are excited in there. And then, they're in the gym, they're lining up with their teacher just like we saw at GES. And then also I saw Mr. McMahon who was talking to the parents. Students were in with Ms. Brightlow, but he was talking to the parents of class 2031 there as well. And then this morning, starting at the middle school, they have a tradition where they line up all their staff and you can see Mr. Dearing with the colored shirt there clapping. But the tie-dye shirts were for their link crew leaders who are welcoming all the sixth graders. So John Long has sixth grade only today and so they have a special day for them as they had some eighth graders, there were link crew members. How many link crew, how many eighth graders are in link crew? Yeah, 35. So they bring all them together, they bring all the sixth graders in. They have a big huge welcome sixth grader sign and they all sit in the bleachers and it's pretty cool there. And then moving on to the high school, high school does a similar thing where they have staff and they have some link crew. And Mr. Mantai, how many link crew do you have?
About the same.
About the same? Yeah, so they have kids, and all these students, I know I had, Mr. Viper this morning had mentioned that the middle school kids probably are like 6:15, 6:30 getting ready for those eighth graders or those sixth graders to be coming in. So you think of, they don't have to be there at all. And the kids that are represented at the high school also, it's freshmen only in the morning. So those high school students coming in, spending time, all the freshmen come walking in that, down that area and people cheer for them as they come in just like they did at the middle school. I was able to see some kids, so then they break up into small groups and they have some of those freshmen working with juniors and seniors and just doing some ice breaking activities for them. So they can know some students, something that feel comfortable as they move to GES or GHS and then following that. Then they did, and you can see all the kids, class 2021. So you can see them standing, sitting in that area up there. The students in orange are the link crew leaders and they're doing an activity where they're putting their hands on their back as they're facing a different direction and so forth. And then, last but not least, we have, one of the things that they do at the middle school is they do the roller coaster. And so it's really like three minutes, it almost used up all of my battery. I'm like, well, I might give you three minutes of Mr. Dearing because then maybe we just go so fast. But I'll give you 22 seconds so you can click this. This is, so this is the beginning. I don't think they have sound because you can hear Mr. Dearing's voice. Hey, you gotta stop, you gotta hear more, you know, in the corner. There. Over. There you go. No sound. Well, that's sort of a skill. So Mr. Dearing.
So many ad-libs.
Walks. Yeah, let's rewind a little bit. So you can start at the beginning of here. So Mr. Dearing has everyone sitting there and then Mr. Viper is having students.
Okay, fine.
And then.
Guys, you're good. Now, we're getting to the top. Now, what happens when you go down the hill? Where do you put your hands? Put them off and then what else can you do? Okay, so.
So he starts his whole, so he talks to them about sitting. You, like, why don't you tell us, Mr. Dearing, what they do?
What you gotta start, you gotta teach them first how to lock in, which is the. Then you gotta work on the crumbling of the feet, which is going up the hill. And you gotta work on like getting your hands up and screaming and then we talked about rotation, then we take a slow motion core ride and then we do fast and then we come to the end and then we do like a little chant and then, then I leave for the day.
I was exhausted for three minutes recording and I could hold still watching them. So, 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 end of the little video of the middle school doing the roller coaster. So each school though had great things happening. So kudos to all of our principals, our staff, putting forth, putting forth some extra effort today with the rain and just trying to be flexible and getting kids in there and so forth. And so a big shout out to all of them. It was ironic, I was, as I was walking around last week, talking to staff and seeing how sneak peek had gone. We had a great turnout for sneak peek at all of our elementaries and the middle school as well. And Ms. Fannerstil, who is a kindergarten aide at Woodview, had talked about how excited she was because right outside her window is where the gym's going and doing some of that thing. And she had gone to kindergarten in that classroom. Her two daughters had gone to kindergarten in that classroom. And so she was sharing just how much, how much pride she has for Woodview and how excited she is to see it even become even better. And she's going to be able to see that as an adult now. So, so, a lot of personal stories I think that are coming in as we're moving into construction phase, which is very, very cool as well. And then on Wednesday, our editing team is meeting and we'll debrief, you know, what went well with the six graders. You had just freshmen at the high school, then 10th, 11th, 12th came in at 11:30. So we'll see how drop off, pickup goes at all of our levels with different, with the construction pieces and fencing and all that stuff. So we'll debrief, find team some of that stuff for the rest of the year and see what that looks like. So we have a meeting set for that that goes with that. And then also last week, we had our years of service recognition. And so what we did is we took a picture of each of the staff for five years, 10 years, 15, 20, 25, and then we had one who goes for 33 years. So we had Mary Kay Araya, Randy Beck, Kathy Brown, Pat Kanowski, Gwen Lingel, Kayla Meyer and Jean O'Leary were honored for five years of service for our district. For 10 years of service, Heidi Hink, Sam Huber, Ann Lorrie, Sarah Luthy, Robin Morgan, Kim Nims, Beth Valerius, Kellin Wesson and Mary Beth Wildy were honored for 10 years of service. For 15 years of service, we had Mike Bergman, Pete Delkey, Becky Brahim, Jenny Callaway, Joanne Duffner, Bob Geyer, Colette Ergens, Bev Emley, Rosalyn Isbell, Chuck James Johnson, Helen Koenig, Julie Laurie, Christine Linus, Nikki Matthews, Lori Mathias, April Shanks, Sarah Zlowski, Melissa Stoudt, Brenda Stilo, Erin Sumner and Mary Jean Westfall. We started this last year with honoring them and we missed Pete last year as we were doing the, so this is really his 16th year. But we had missed him, he'd started at a different time and so then he wasn't even in. When we did the right parameters this year, we'd missed him. So we honored him, but unfortunately we weren't able to do it at that time. But if you want to give him credit for his years of service, he's actually been here 16 years. And then for 20 years, we have Jen Andrews, Darlene Griffin, Laura Jarvis, Mike Colia and Dave Waters for 20 years of service. And then for 25, Linda Bender, Ryan Durst and Jody Lab. And all three of them said they started when they were 12. Jody Lab actually said, I just have been here 15 years. I'm like, are you serious? And she's like, oh no, I'm just kidding. I'm like, okay, maybe nervous. Because we had missed someone, Shereen Marte, as last year we started, anyone that was over 30, we gave 31, 32, whatever their years of service would be. And Shereen somehow we missed last year. So she completed her 33 years of service. Both her and Patty Shepherd were featured on the front cover of the Grafton.
Record.
Record. Thank you, Grafton Record. With a nice story about them and the years of service they've given to GES and just their thoughts about construction, moving forward and the excitement they have. But also Shereen for 33 years of service was really a great thing. So we wanted to recognize her as well. So fun, fun time recognizing all these people. It's great to see that many people that are, that are in our district that have been here for that long. And we have 12 new staff members who joined us. We have one that's student teaching, that's why there's 13 in the picture. But so great to see us retaining quality staff and to have people that have been here that long as well. And then just a couple of housekeeping items. Groundbreaking ceremony, I started hearing more about this, but they're on September 12th at 11 o'clock, right out by the district office where the sign is for the district. We're gonna take that area there and that will be where the groundbreaking ceremony is going to be. So that will be coming up on the 12th. So we'll start getting more information about that. But we'll be publicizing that, inviting people and so forth. That's coming up on the 12th. We'll have students involved with that, both musically as well as giving a speech as well. And then homecoming week, since we're now meeting monthly, we're also looking ahead and by the time we meet next, we will have had homecoming at the high school. And I think, Mr. Mantai, what is the theme for this year?
Pixar movies. And if you're curious, they'll be based off the movies Fighting Evil, Toy Story, Monsters, Ape, even Up. Are the movies that will represent each of our classes. Lots of things going on during homecoming weeks. Studio is finalizing the planning of that week, but we'll do everything from window decorating, decorating building, floor building, whatever, pep rally. We do lots of other things, the dress up day, lunch games, all of the typical homecoming activities. We'll have our Hall of Fame nominations or induction. It's good week will take place during that week. We'll be too detailed about that as we get a little closer. And to home meetings on Friday night with a home football game against the Cedarburg Bulldogs. So should be an exciting week. We're looking forward to it. Super Bowl's doing an awesome job putting it together very early in the school year. So we wanted to get it on your radar right away as well.
Excellent. Thank you, Mr. Mantai. And then our, last year we implemented background check procedures and we wanted to update the board on a, on what we're moving forward with for the next year to make it more efficient.
Yeah, we're looking at using a different vendor just as background. About a year and a half ago, we switched from using, and this was just for employees, mind you, from just using the state DOG background check to using CSSI. They would did, they ran a national check. Now, we hadn't used it that much because it was just for employees. So last year, when we started doing background checks for volunteers, we used a lot more heavily. And after looking at it and using it, there is another vendor out there that will run checks, that will actually run the checks to all the different counties. So it'll pick up even more. That's number one, but they'll also, it'll be online. So we will not handle people's sensitive information. That would just be the company and then we would just merely get the report and make a call on whether they would be cleared to be a volunteer. It does come with an increased cost, although we probably wouldn't see that increased cost really till about three years from now, since we had to run really everybody this past year that wanted to be a volunteer. The next couple of years, as people have, you know, will run it again in three years, the next couple of years won't be that heavy as far as the usage. So last year we spent about $4,400 on the background checks, although that would include employees as well. So it would be maybe three years from now where we'd see maybe a slight spike in that cost, although it's possible some third, fourth or fifth grade parents might not be as excited or maybe their kids wouldn't be as excited when they hit middle school to have mom and dad come on a field trip per se. So some of that may dissipate as well. We wanted to update that to you and let you know that that's kind of in the works. We're looking at ways to message that to families.
What is the name of the bureau?
They are called BIB.
BIB?
I believe it's Background Investigation Bureau.
Thank you.
The complaint we heard the most from parents was the concern about their personal information and either bringing it in themselves or dropping it off or saying it to their kid or whatever it may be, whatever however they chose to do it. And then that being housed somewhere. And so this addresses that concern, addresses the concern of having to bring something in or anything else. And we have our employees, we have their paper copies that are locked in the file cabinet, which is what we do currently. But that's why the data is concerned here from parents. And this will address that, that concern. It will just take it and become all online, that they'll go online to fill out.
So they submit it online?
They do. Yep, they, they'll have everything online, I think just from home if they don't have internet, so they can come into us and utilize it that way. Or they don't feel comfortable doing it, then we can help them with that. But it's all online.
Frequency, is it every three years or?
That's our current policy, yes.
Current policy is every three years.
For volunteers.
That it? No more questions?
And so one of the things that, one last thing I wanted to share is that on Monday, September 11th, Carrie and I talked about it and one of the things we talked about was doing a board workshop around board goals. We have committee meetings that will be scheduled that night to try and set up a workshop time to sort of begin having that discussion that would go along with that. So you'll see information on that, but I'll just go to that and discuss that.
We're kind of looking at making that the next step as a follow-up to our board retreat. We also need to somehow incorporate the stuff that Carrie put together. Maybe we can do it that night as well. We'll take a look and see how ambitious that agenda is going to be. But that new board member orientation stuff that Carrie had put together, we need to circle back there. I'll meet with Carrie in the meantime, we'll talk about that stuff. But maybe we, we might tack that on that night if it looks like we have time as well.
It depends on what committee, what committees are meeting that night and how long those will be going forward. So we're finalizing that, at least get that put on people's radars. If that doesn't work, if people aren't going to be there, then we can look at moving that to a different date, but at least putting that out there for that. And then anything that board members want to share, we try to, I think sometimes I remember they ask that, but some things I forget. Kind of be better with that. Maybe it's your honor, things in the community, okay? Excellent. I will say, I think that, I will give a shout out to Mike Donahue from the GF who came and spoke to our staff about the Grafton Education Foundation and just what they, what they do for our students and for our staff and being able to, the fundraisers that they do, the other parks in the park that's going on right now and get shared that and then the Super Bowl. Just did a really nice job representing the GF. They tied in very well because the theme was, was people who had gone in our district and we have a number of staff members who have been, have been to our district from elementary all the way through high school and then have come back and talked. And so we had pictures of them, they submitted pictures when they were little and then we played a little game on Kahoot where they could guess who it was. But Mr. Donahue also graduated from high school, so we were to put a picture up of him as well. And, but he's, but shout out to him for coming in. And this work GF is doing for us is also greatly appreciated.
Just maybe one thing to add, the cornrows yesterday?
Oh, yes.
Do you want? Just the, man, I thought the, the Gitch Club did a great job with that again. So, you know, definitely kudos to them as well.
Yeah, that was one of those things too, it looked like it was gonna pour rain. It was pouring in the morning and then sort of cleared out until later that night, but they made it throughout the whole day.
Correct.
And even though it may have seemed if you were only at the park that there wasn't, there weren't as many people as last year because there's a number of people that were at high school for the day on Friday.
Correct.
There's a number of cars that go here, but we're here. But yeah, a lot of work that went into that, a lot of time on there. They're a big fundraiser. Thank you.
Okay, so you have a personnel report for us, Jeff?
So we would ask for approval for new hire of Adam Burlo, a special education teacher at Grafton Elementary School, as well as the resignation of Lauren Plament and our teacher at John Long Middle School. New hires are information only for Yvonne Bold, special education aide at Kennedy Elementary, Tanya Nass, special education aide at Kennedy Elementary, Rekamoto, 4K aide at Kennedy, Susan Grosskopf, kindergarten aide at Grafton Elementary, Karen Kaplan, a library clerk at Grafton High School, Deanna Zabel, library clerk at Grafton High School, Ron Jacoby, special aide aide at Grafton High School. And then resignations of Beth Valerius, special aide aide at John Long, Darlene Griffin, special aide aide at Kennedy, and Laura Jet, special aide aide at Grafton High School. So we'd ask for motion to approve the hire of Adam Burlo and resignation of Lauren Plament.
You have a motion of that effect?
It's removed.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it passes.
And earlier this summer, we had some of our students along with Frau Fry go to Germany. And so you had approved the trip and we got, this would be something that with an international trip, it'd be great to see and hear from them. And so Frau was here and I know Emily and Katie who are juniors and I wish I knew you, I'm sorry.
Jackie.
Jackie, I'm up here to you, Jackie. You're a junior as well and she's coming from Bible practice. So she, all these students are juggling a lot of things. So I'll turn it over to Frau Fry.
Yeah, so I am Karen Fry. I did read the news article that was in Grafton News and there also was another article in the Ozaki people, which is, which all this called. And yes, my students who are so kind to come and join us. So this is the, we're back from our trip, our successful trip. Three weeks we spent Germany, Switzerland and Austria. And thanks to your support, I recognize somebody and I appreciate that you support the trip. But Grafton has the vision to support the German exchange program. This is the 16th year of an exchange program, which is different than just a German trip. We have a connection to a city and to a school in Germany. And there is a value in the trip. This year it was something new. Part of the, part of the trip included a career readiness. So the students did do some job shadowing and learn how to apply perhaps to an internship or even studying abroad. A little bit different in Germany. So that's something new. And wow, we began, so I'll go first and you can see what they would like to share or you could ask them something. We began, we traveled so far, we have to see some highlights. And so we did travel to Munich and Salzburg, Austria, through the Alps to Switzerland. And this starts off the trip. Places they've seen in their textbooks and they've seen and now they're there. And it's amazing. And they, they really appreciate it, I know. And they rode on buses, taxis, trains, high speed train, boats. And then we got up to our, to down Germany, about in the left-hand western mid part of Germany, our sister school. And they spent 10 days with families and they were all matched with students. I imagine it's pretty good?
Yeah.
Little bit of anxiety, but it always turns out good. Oh, and they were on the Autobahn too, lest I forget that. That they wanted to, to be on the Autobahn. I think the most important part is the 10 days when they accompany the German students, just everyday life, doing those things. For me, at the end of the trip, I asked them two questions. And to me, that gauge is the success of the trip. The first question is, if you ever travel on a business trip or study abroad, not just Germany, not just Switzerland, Europe really now is just a big, the EU is really consolidated into one, do you feel like you could navigate? Would you feel confident coming here that you could navigate, you could find your way? And they all said yes. And the second question is, do you want to come back? And they all said yes. As a matter of fact, last year, of course, I had many tears. Why can't we stay longer? Why did you make it so short? You made it too short. From many students say that, why? Oh, I say you can always come back. You can say those things and you can come back. And that's, that's what I want to hear. So in four weeks, we're going to welcome the German students here to the exchange program. One of your classmates, I don't know, if you know, so Diana Groben Schommer is a graduate of Grafton High School. And she began this exchange program, she lives in Germany. So she'll be coming here with her students and Grobe's. And then we get to show them Grafton's Germanic kite. Yeah? Which is really fun. Yeah, they're very good to us there and so our students are excited about showing them. Thank you. So, yeah, I think that's, I wanted to say, do you want to say something? If you want to listen, ask me something? Any other questions? What do you want to know?
When you're in your 10 days in the family's area, is it 100% German speaking?
No, I mean, the family I stayed with, the mom spoke a little German, not a lot. The brother was, he was trying to speak more littler words that I would be able to understand, which was awesome. And the dad, he didn't, he had difficulty. Or no.
Wait.
But yeah, I was able to understand and talk back with them. That's what I learned.
How many years of German have the three of you had here?
I'm in German four right now, so four years.
Three. She has, we had Emily and Jackie, and two of them. Jackie knows more German.
Yeah, I was born in Germany, so I've been back and forth there pretty much all my life and spoken at home. So it was a lot easier for me to just understand anything that's going on. So if someone would ask us a question, I was able to translate, even if like we couldn't necessarily speak in full sentence in Africa.
Yeah, Jackie's very good travel skills. So she was really good with that for some students who have never been on an airplane, students who have never been on an airplane. So we have good friends and so Jackie was wonderful there. No question for Emily?
Favorite part of the trip, Emily?
Um, I have to go. It was all a lot of fun, the whole experience. I kind of picked favorite part. All of it was great.
So you all wanted it to be longer. Do you think any of you will be foreign exchange students for a year or a semester or something like that and extend it on your own?
I'd want to do it in college. I was looking at places in England or Ireland, so I'm really interested in that for a year.
Yeah, I thought about it. Definitely don't think I'd be able to do a year because I miss my family too much. But yeah, it's amazing over there. People are so nice and, I mean, one thing that's really different is you have to buy water there. So that was one thing that I thought was a shock, but yeah, otherwise I would soak it back.
How was the food?
Oh, it was good, a lot of sausage.
I think we didn't have that much of, I mean, at least in my experience, it wasn't like the authentic food with sauerkraut, but like the, you know.
They definitely aren't accustomed to tourists.
And they're eating healthier. So I lived in Germany for five years, and there are certain things I liked and were looking for. And now they have a healthy version. I'm like, wait, what? One that I wanted, and in the restaurants, they made things healthier. The Germans, that's just what they're used to. So they're doing that. Hope so.
Were the families you stayed with, were they in school or were they on summer vacation as well?
Um, no, they were in school. We went with.
Yeah, they finished the day we were leaving. So that, like, the day we got on the taxi to go back to the train station, to go back to the airport, they were actually having their last day, and then the next day they were off.
Yeah, they had their six-week break, and then they went back.
So what's the difference between American school and German school?
The schedule. Schedule. Schedule, we'd come in at 7:30, and some people come in later, but all of us would come in at 7:30. And then maybe we'd have like two or three classes, and then we're done for the day, and we can like go home, or we could like go to the beach or eat lunch somewhere. And it was like, everyone just seemed to be a lot more relaxed and everyone, everyone's getting a phone every week, most of the people, I don't hear. And I feel like the schedule definitely was the biggest difference in the school.
And the, it was really boring in the walls. Like, we have stuff everywhere. I look in the library, there's stuff everywhere. There was, the walls were plain, and they were just straight tables and stuff. It was really boring, but.
There to learn.
Yeah.
Well, thank you. Thank you, ladies, for sharing.
We were glad to, but thanks for having us.
Thank you.
Yes, my second doctor's statement, we were saying we approved trips like that, it'd be great if people come and give appreciation and talk about, you know, what they enjoyed about it, so to see why you're approving it, and what some of the benefits of the work you're doing for us. It's hard work, you know, giving up three weeks, so there's someone to do that for us, you have a great experience.
She have some updates for us?
We do, so we don't have any, we have a whole interview coming this update, and really the update that we have is, and previously at our board meeting, the board was saying ask for us to try and overlay the village long-term plan, 30-year plan, along with the town, the chief of the town had given us, and then break that out by the two options that we're looking at, so options C and D. We don't have, we don't have updated numbers, you know, today was the first day of school. And so we, you guys to sort of wait till that third Friday count. So at the September meeting, we will be bringing back, you know, what does that look like now, kindergarten through fifth grade, in both options C and D, you'll look and see all those pieces. You guys for socioeconomic status, things of that nature, we'll be trying to break that out as well, between now and then, once we get our enrollment set. But Rick, kudos to Rick for a lot of his work on this. And what it does is, it breaks it out, so you can see that the dark blue is town potential, future lots is what that is. So if you look at, you know, this area up here, this says 50, you know, that's potential. 15 is potential, 35 is potential, 30 is potential. If we look at the yellow, it's the town existing. So these are developments that currently, you know, someone were to buy it today and get a builder in two months, then they'd be ready to go. So you have four lots here, one here, 19 here, and then one lot here. Then we have the town recently improved, which is the red ones. You have seven, you have six, and you have 14. So those are the recently approved ones. So those will be, you know, it's almost like, you know, what's happening now, what's coming, and then what could happen somewhere down the road at some point. And that bill is potential future is, is some of the, the light blue that we see here. So the village's future plan. So we don't have it broken down into what it is. And even if you look at this, this is really Zaun Field here. This is our land. So, and we know right across the street from that land is Little League. So, you know, I think the Little League has a 20-year lease of village.
20 or 30.
Something like that, you know, whatever it is, similar to what goes on things. So we know that, you know, whatever that means, way down the road. You can see up here that this is, this is all village's future plan, although this is Cedarburg School District, and this is Grafton School District that would go with that. And it's really the town as well. But it's, they're assuming that would become that area. What it doesn't show is what we just saw in the paper. Rick, I had to bring that with me, remind me of where that is. There's 21 lots.
Shady Lane.
Shady Lane. And that isn't included on any of this, but is in this area.
North of Green Bay.
Up there. If I zoom in, you'd see it, we're zooming in on today. So you can sort of see, so if we look at, so option C, which is the option that we're looking at here, is sort of breaking it out, and you can see the village's future plan up here, village's future as it comes down, what each of those means as you're looking at it, looking at it in that way. Option D is a similar piece, except now we're truly just adjusting our boundary line. So that it's, it's now, it's coming across instead of coming down, and it's taking, it's leaving this chunk here to go up. So that's, remember here it came, now it comes here and then comes down. It's that orange, it's a little hard to see. The orange is really our, our zone, coming down to the blue and coming over. But it sort of gives you an idea of what that looks like with the village, with the village's long range plan, as well as the town, the town, both current development, proposed development, and then somewhere in the future development of what that looks like. So just giving you an idea of that, you know, it doesn't, doesn't give you as much information because there isn't numbers that go with this. But at least you can sort of see, once we get numbers next month, you can be processing, okay, what does that mean with some of these lots that we know are for sale that are almost sold out, along with the 21, that are just being proposed now for development? How long of a list does that, what does that look like? Questions?
I guess not. You nailed it.
It's informational, it's an update we want parents to be able to see as well, if they want to watch it, you know, on YouTube again. Just trying to overlay that, give you as much information as possible with that. So we know you have more information you want to see in September. We'll have third Friday count. We'll break that out, we'll give you the data that breaks it out by grade level and so forth, and see how that's changed.
It's really an important issue. It's good to keep bringing it out in front of everybody, keep, keep it in front of everybody's eyes for sure. Thanks.
At that point, is that when we'll, we'll be talking about?
Yep.
The boundaries?
Excellent. Yep, so the board will have to decide, you know, do you want to make a decision in the September board meeting? Will there be enough information for you to do that? Would you like to wait another month and have that discussion again, and have the data out there and look at it? Will it be so clear?
Sure.
Concise, you know, what that looks like? Will it be a point that will, that will, that will be a decision that the board, at that point? And I think at that point, whether we make a decision or not, we need to communicate with families. There's the next step. So we've communicated, we're waiting until September to have this discussion, but then communicate what is the next step. Is it, here's the decision, or is it, we're going to have a listening session, or here's the data, we're coming back in October, contact us and let us know your thoughts? You know, we did ask for feedback from parents during registration. You know, we had 92 people who responded to that online survey, giving feedback on options C and D, and I think some good feedback, some people that were very honest with feedbacks. Some, you know, being very honest, saying, you know, this is, this is my own personal opinion, I realize you look big term, and others, you know, sharing perspectives on both sides. So that was an action, and we asked for us to complete, families, they completed that during the online registration piece, as some other feedback as well.
Has there been any, I know we all, we get access to the responses from those surveys, but has there been any tabulation done, or are we?
We could do that.
To make our own tabulation?
Yeah, we could totally come up with, like, you say tabulation, would you like to see it? Like, is there a theme for options C and D?
Right.
Whether it's positive or negative? And then maybe the number of responses that would go with that?
Yes, yes. You'd have software to do it, keyword search and things. We just have PDF of it, right?
Yeah, it's tabulation, I've tried to do it. It gets hard, because as you said, some people said, like, here's a pro of C, here's a pro, like, they gave pros for both, and they're like, I understand it's better for my family to have D personally, but I'm okay, you know.
Well, but so can we, leaning C, leaning D indifferent? Or?
We could.
If you have the capability to do that, I think it would be easier using keyword search.
Can people still respond to this survey yet?
No, it was closed, because it was just through the online registration piece, and now the registration's completed.
We, it was in the district news through last week.
Sure.
And that's when it stopped. And I took it out, and I, it's not accepting response anymore.
It's just another piece. So that would be good.
Here you have that.
Last week, we came up with socioeconomic aspect. I'm not really able to look in depth at a lot of that data. Correct. Start screening, just launch. We can share percentages, yeah, we'll be able to break out, now that we have current, once we get through third, third Friday count, we'll be able to share out, like, what the percentage is, if we're, if they were currently going to each of those schools, so the board could take a look at that. Yeah, the information itself is confidential, so the individual people, the board will not know, but the overall, you know, 12%, 18%, 10%, 25%, whatever it may be, we'll be able to break out both in options C and D for those two schools, if we had two schools right now. Okay. Yep, so just want to keep it in front of you, community, community, I was going to ask and wonder, and I know you're, you're keen on asking questions as well, which is great, but I wanted to update you on that. Okay? I'm going to turn it over to Topper for the next two pieces.
There were a couple of budget-related items on the agenda. First off, it's an update to the budget that was, the preliminary budget that was passed by the board in June. Since then, we've made some changes in terms of revenue. So in the memo I list, some things that stayed the same, but some of the things that changed as well. So for example, for revenue, we are now looking at having $200, a $200 increase in per-people aid. We've been using $150 per-people amount in the preliminary budget that we passed in June. We don't have a state budget yet, but the talk has all been that 200 sounds very likely. Then we've been looking at a $50,000 decrease in the preliminary budget to Medicaid, but now that we had final numbers that come, came through in July, we could analyze and take a look at them, in August, it looked like that decrease will only be $35,000. And along with that account, there's, there's a host of accounts that you take a look at individually. Once you have final budget, or final numbers that came in, we make those adjustments. And then an item that we discussed at the July board meeting, that levy into Fund 41 of $400,000, that is reducing the levy into Fund 10. Thus essentially, we are budgeting for a $400,000 decrease in our fund balance. As far as expenditures, we've, we've made our hires, we have all those salary information in, in the budget. People have declared what benefits they're going to take, that's all in there. Different line items were adjusted based on how we finished the year this year. And of course, we added, as you requested, library books. We also know now that we should be expecting about a $325,000 increase to our fund balance. That would take it up to about 500, or 5,025,000. So with the updated budget that we have, we would be looking at ending, ending this upcoming year with a fund balance of 4,625,000. It's about 75,000 roughly less than we ended last year. And that would be, would be a little over 19% for a fund balance ratio. So I've included an object budget, a function budget, budget summary, which is up on display right now, and I also included the memo related to that Fund 41 levy. So if there are any questions?
So with no change in the open enrollment differential, we have the same number as we did last year, that stayed true?
We're using that estimate right now. We'll know, that'll be part of the third Friday count, and we'll get, we'll know, we'll have a much better idea of students that are open and rolling in and out. The difference from, say, I think four years ago, is kids can continue to open and roll in and out throughout the year, whereas it used to be shut off at a certain point, and you knew that wouldn't change. But once we find out who's actually showing up, both open and rolling out to other schools, and in our school, that'd be part of that third Friday count. We'll know that in October, and be able to put a final budget number in for that.
Do we have a budget for Fund 41?
We do.
And what is?
We are, the budget is to spend $400,000 on the soccer fields, as well as $160,000 on the tennis courts.
Do we have bids for the soccer fields?
We do not have bids.
There's an estimate that's now nearly a year old, was 277,000.
We had them redo that. So we met with, we met with Rettler, and we asked, because we wanted to be able to go to, we have to ask for that amount, that levy, that Fund 41 levy at the annual meeting. And I want to be able to publish that, you know, it's the first week of September. So we asked them for updated estimates on the soccer field. So this is as of last week.
So, so Fund 41 is only going to fund those two things, the soccer field and the tennis court?
For next year, yes.
For next year, okay. And do we have bids on the tennis courts?
We don't have bids, no.
So how did we come up with that number?
That number was given to us by a consultant, a budget number, so we're anticipating a bid to come in, less than that.
Does it, what, it includes the tennis court fencing nets?
Correct. So right now, we're in the process of soil boarding, and we've done Wednesday, and from there, we were proceeding to hold the bids.
And right now, Rettler's handling the bidding at no extra cost as part of the athletic fields that they were doing. I think we really looked at about $150,000 as the, $150,000 as the estimate for the tennis courts, but then also we were looking at the potential of, say, $10,000 in fees. And right now, I think Rettler's doing, taking care of the fees on the tennis courts, it was going to be about between 5,000 and 6,000.
But Rettler is the civil engineer, right?
Yes.
What do they know about designing tennis?
They do that, yeah. They do all sorts of athletic.
They do? Okay.
Yeah, between them and, and point of beginning, they're probably two biggest ones in the state.
So they're both civil engineer and?
Athletic design, yeah. And the other, I think we talked, I can't remember if it was at the owners' meeting, we talked about piggybacking the fencing of the soccer and the tennis courts to, so they're done under the same bid?
Yes, that's correct. That was a thing that we did talk about.
Yeah, because otherwise you won't, you won't have a very.
Right, even because they said, we're so close, you're so close to both sites. They already have a site, someone on site, it's a quick trip across town to be able to bid that out for that. And that's why Rettler's handling both of those pieces as well, saving us money there.
And then in the cover memo, in July 24, the lighting projects at Kennedy and Woodview, have we determined what those projects are, the nature and extent of those projects?
In terms, I guess I don't know.
The ESCO?
The train.
The train.
No, we don't check right now. Train will, they're still working on that, along with looking at how bids come in over the next couple of months with the referendum.
Okay.
They're going to also be going out and bidding and figuring out how much things, or I should say bidding, but they'll be coming up with estimates sometime in October.
They were given by Hopman, they were given the different light fixtures, the various things that we'll be utilizing, so that we'll have a standardized, whether Train's doing it, whether Hopman's doing it, we're using the similar lighting, or chiller, heating, or stuff like that, right, Jane?
Yeah, correct. Implementation with all of these companies daily. In fact, tomorrow, we have four companies that are contractors that are walking a district with the train, just on those different projects. So like I mentioned, Rettler, civil engineer, will be here, soil boarding, testing the soil at the soccer field, and John Long Middle School Wednesday. So it's a constant process, we'll move as fast as we can.
And I just, and now this next question may jump to the next agenda item, I'm not sure, but the impact of ESCOs on the mill rate and tax levy?
It wouldn't, it's going to be within the revenue limit. And when we issue the debt, it wouldn't come out of this year's debt levy, or this year's debt.
Then it would be next year, future years.
Correct. So fall of 2018, we would need to levy to make that debt payment. But the idea being that it wouldn't cost us anything more, because we would have, we would have savings in Fund 10 as a result of the project that is causing us to have to levy to Fund 38.
I'll hold my questions for the, for the next segment. I agree with what you're saying, I just, it leads to more questions.
The $200 pupil increase, is that, I mean, there were, there was talk of strings attached to that, is that?
As far as I know, that those strings are not attached anymore.
Updates we shared today, that they were taking out from the Republican caucus to say, it was 200, 204 wasn't being touched, and the 12% insurance that Governor Rocker had thrown in, they're recommending it be removed, but that, but that annually, districts have to report what they are doing for these types of things, because they're hearing from districts that whether it's 12% or whatever, this is the amount of money we've saved, and these are the different ways we're doing it, whether it's deductible, whatever it may be. And so that's, that's what's being moved forward, and that's what the latest thing I saw today.
Okay. Next.
All right, next item is our levy. Oh, the adjustments.
Motion to approve these adjustments, okay. Is there such a motion?
Submit.
Second.
Any other further discussion or questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
All right, so you have information regarding our levy and note rate estimate through this annual meeting. At this point, we're estimating a 66 cent increase to the note rate for 1718. And as background, I have that in. And as background, I have that in the memo, that 66 cents is what we were using as an estimate of the impact of the referendum alone. So it ended up that the referendum impact came down due to getting rates that were much lower than the estimates, estimates we were using in January, and our property values end up, our estimate, current estimate is much higher than the 1% we were using in January. Those two things coming together has caused the impact of the referendum debt, the new referendum debt, to come down to 43 cents. But then, in addition, we have lost state aid compared to last year, and so we're decreasing that state aid, has led to an increase in property taxes, which also impact that mill rate, and bring it up to 66 cents. We bring, we bring that projection summary, and we start with... So we start with our revenue limit, and we're not, we're assuming that our revenue limit is going to be fairly flat, that our membership is going to be the same, as a three-year average, membership will be the same as last year. Any change in three-year membership average will be an increase in the revenue limit. Either it will be an increase because we have more members, and we get to then calculate that maximum per member amount and add that on, or if it is a decreased average, then we end up getting a whole harmless, which brings us up to the same, but we also get a declining membership piece that gets added on top of that. So either way, it's about $10,500 per member for a difference from last year. Right now, we're using a budget that has a revenue limit that stays fairly flat. Now, we take, out of the revenue limit, we take our state aid, which is down, this is our, on the right-hand side, you'll see our July 1 state aid estimate, whereas on the left, you'll see our actual October 15 certified state aid. And that's a drop of over $180,000. This is due to our loss of membership, so last year's state aid membership number was 2081, and then the one used for this year is 2062. Also, our equalized values went up 5.4% last year, I believe the state last year was around 2.5. So our values are going up faster, our membership was dropping, so our average value per member increased $46,000. The state's average membership, or average value per membership, only went up $15,000. So ours was increasing three times as much as the state average. We look a lot more property wealthy than the rest of the state, thus, we're losing a significant amount of state aid. So within the revenue limit, that becomes replaced with the property tax. I do add in the computer aid, computer aid is technically part of our levy authority. The state provides districts with the computer aid that you would have levied against computer property in the district. So then, our total property levy authority is that $15,663,000. So that's within the revenue limit, it gets broken down into Fund 38, and that's our non-referendum debt. And that payment, or that the levy is decreasing due to decreased payments for calendar year 2018. You'll see the Fund 41 levy that we talked about earlier, with the increase of $400,000 into Fund 41 for the soccer field this upcoming year, and then you'll see that Fund 10 levy. Now, if we had not decided, the board had not decided to fund those athletic fields through a spend down of fund balance, then that $400,000 would be levied into Fund 10 to create a balanced budget and no budgeted decrease in our fund balance. So right now, once you take this Fund 38 levy into Fund 41, the rest can be levied into Fund 10. Outside the revenue limit, we also have our debt, our referendum approved debt. So you have, this upcoming year, we're levying $2.946 million, and in the memo, I do outline the amount that is related to our previous debt from 2001 referendum. We also have a portion of that that is related to the debt we just issued in July, and then we have an estimated amount for debt that we will be issuing in January for a special payment on that debt issue next fall. And so we take that, that amount, the outside the revenue limit debt levy, plus what's in the revenue limit for our all-fund tax levy of $18.61 million. We take that levy amount and apply it against the property value in the district, we are using a, an estimated increase in property value in the district of 3.1%. I've included Baird's handout, that they use, that once municipal values come out in August, they put together estimates for school districts that show what they're expecting that district increase to be on October 1, which is when we'll get that certified equalized property value. So when you apply that against that equalized property value, we get a mill rate of 11.27, which is that 66 cent increase from 2016-17. So with that said, we still have some unknowns, we don't know our third Friday count yet, that can potentially change our revenue limit, we don't know what our equalized values are going to be yet, that would affect the note rate, the Wisconsin private school choice program, we don't know what our exemption is going to be on our revenue limit until October 15. And then, of course, there's the state aid that we'll get on October 15. And I'll point out that two years ago, the October 15 value was over $200,000 more than the July 1 estimate, and last year, we saw an increase of around 100, almost $120,000 on our October 15 certified, when compared to the July 1 estimate. Being that we have a lot of information coming in around, or a little before October 15, we are recommending that we have a finance committee meeting on, I think, Wednesday, October 18, to be able to digest all this information, as well as take a look at that flexible debt payment that we would have in the fall, based on our, the debt that we will issue in January, or thereabouts in 2018. Any questions?
So I think this is great, I think it's well laid out and well thought through and well presented. I guess my questions are more, and this is why it leads into the whole notion of the ESCO. So those preliminary estimates that Baird has provided in regards to increase in property tax of 3.3%, right? If the state stays at 2.6% like it did this year, we will again be 26% above the state number.
And I apologize, I meant to mention that Baird, well, I probably don't need Baird to do this, but Baird did send an email out today stating that state equalized values went up 4%. So just like we got hit by being, you know, well above that state average, next year, based on preliminary numbers, we'll be below the state average.
So they are projecting 4%?
Statewide 4% over at 3.3.
Okay.
So that will help us in that calculation.
It'll reduce the impact on negative tertiary, and in effect, generate more state aid.
Correct, and that's a piece of it, you know, we also have our membership, which we won't know till January has come about, because we'll use September, the average of September and January, plus summer school. So once we get into the end of January, early February, we'll have that piece, and we can see what happened to us in terms of our average per member.
Did Baird say what, they're attributing that to?
The state.
The increase in state? Why would they be projecting?
Well, they can take, they just take all those municipality pieces that are released on the, in mid-August, and they can just come up with what, because every minute, you just put it all together.
Right, they're available on the Department of Revenue website now.
Yeah, it was, it was a very brief synopsis of what the state did, there wasn't any explanation as to why those values were up.
Right, again, my, and it's not next year, it's the year after, I guess, that I'm looking at, the impact of borrowing associated with the ESCO projects, or any other project for that matter, that we really understand what impact those borrowings might have on the mill rate, especially if we're in an environment where, because of change in property values locally, we could be losing, we could continue to lose state aid. I'd like to get some clearer picture of what that might be. But if Baird is projecting the state to actually go up higher than we're going up, then the only impact that's going to, the only change that'll impact that state aid is change in membership.
Right, now, I'll point out that that ESCO piece will be a Fund 38, that'll be a Fund 38 levy, so any payments we have to make will levy within the revenue limit. So there isn't going to be increased shared cost because of that.
There will not be increases of shared cost.
Right, that has to then, even if, you know, and some districts do it, they'll do an ESCO project, they'll have those increased debt payments to make, they have to cut from Fund 10, they have to, I mean, they don't have the option to just increase the levy based on that.
We'll be in that situation.
Correct, it is not an exemption. So this is just purely, we're going to borrow some money, and we're going to use the savings to make those payments.
And that's one of the things they're trying to get rid of, that is also in that budget bill, as well as getting rid of the exemptions without the only referendum for that, and we're not part of that.
Right.
And those savings by virtue of the ESCO are guaranteed?
Yes.
Good, I mean, I guess my question is, how do we get a handle on, not just, this is, as I said, a great presentation and reflection of next year, but the years after that, so that we're not in a situation, because we should be able to anticipate, we have an X percent increase in valuation, and it seems that most of our loss in aid is driven by that negative tertiary piece, the fact that our property values continue to increase at a rate higher than the state average.
Sure, and you talk about the negative tertiary piece, most aid is lost in that secondary area, because it affects the calculation at each level, and most of our aid, most of our aid is in that secondary level. So it will negatively impact every level of calculation, I don't know if I want to go down the rabbit hole too much, but, but it's all across the board. So next year, we're going to get the benefit of having our property values not go up as much as the state, and the key is, is getting that membership to stabilize, so that when we do have our property values increase, it'll help the mill rate, but not negatively affect our state aid as much.
It's a good point, we lost about $600,000, $534,000 at that secondary level, but both are driven by the change in property value.
Yep.
Right, so, so I guess, if there's a question in here, or a request, is how do we get a better handle on, not next year, the year after and the year after, to ensure that as we progress through the build-out, and the athletic field, and the projects for the ESCO, that we, we have a good, a reasonable understanding of what direction state aid might go, and what impact we might be able to see on future mill rates? Because what I don't want to do is end up in a situation, a year from now, or two years from now, like Port Washington was a year ago, where oops, oh, we just missed this piece, and now the mill rate went sky high.
Well, and a big part of that was, they had the, they recorded bond, bond proceeds in the, in June. So they end up getting, they end up having to put that into June, and they actually, their aid at the tertiary levels is almost even, I think maybe they're slightly negative. So they weren't anticipating the idea, their shared cost dropped below the secondary ceiling, which meant, that's where they're positively aided. So they lost a lot of positive aid, because they did not anticipate that their shared cost would take such a, such a drop. We aren't in that situation, we aren't close enough to that secondary cost to worry about it, and we made sure to close July 6, so that it's impacting next year's shared cost. But I think looking at that membership is going to be the big piece to projecting out, you know, are we beginning to stabilize, so that we can take advantage, if you will, of growth in property values that then help the mill rate, but then, that membership helps keep us from losing too much state aid.
And to that end, that's a great point. Recently, within the last month or so, Cedarburg engaged an outside consultant to look at membership numbers, to look at enrollment trends and projections. We did it using a staff member at the village as part of our efforts, our due diligence, and maybe it's time that we actually go out and at least talk to the folks there, who did they use, what did it cost, to get a better handle on those membership numbers, those projections? Because it does seem to be a pretty critical piece for us.
And they used the lab at Madison.
Ah, that's right, yes.
And other districts have used them, and I reached out to them a couple of months ago, the turnaround time was not going to be able to help us in our discussions, so they sent me a proposal, the professor there had sent me a proposal, so we can continue advancing that, because they need their Friday count, they need all those pieces, and it wasn't going to be, because we were looking to see what that helped us with our elementary boundary piece, and, but it's quite a process that goes with it. Mesquite would use them as well, at the annual convention, I'd went and seen them present, and they'd used the Madison lab, and so other districts have used them, and have enjoyed that, so we could definitely, if I had a proposal, we could look at and bring back to the board for us in that future stuff.
I think it would be important, because...
I don't remember the number, it wasn't like exorbitant.
I mean, one of the things, Jerry, you mentioned at the last meeting here, is, okay, we're on the wrong side, or we were on the wrong side to folks going out versus coming in. Well, you know, we're doing many great things in the district to turn that around, but that is a critical number in all of these calculations.
And I'll point out, as we throw out membership and stuff like that, I'll point out, membership is basically district residents. So we count, we take all the kids who showed up to school, count them, and we subtract the kids who open enrolled in, because we're going to receive a payment from these districts. And then we add in the kids who open enrolled out, and that's essentially where we get our membership number. So it's not enrollment, it's really district residents, wherever they're going to school.
But I'm assuming the lab looks at the long-range plan of the village and the town, they look at, you know, the $40 million investment that we're making here, and what impact that should have. So having a better understanding of what those numbers ought to be, I think will help us with a better understanding, and, you know, provide information that we should be able to use and sit down with the village and the town. Are we getting, are we hitting these trends, or are we not hitting these trends? If not, this is a large public entity in this community, what more can we do to drive closer to those trends?
We'll bring that back, right?
Good.
If you get, I think it's a great idea, it seems like in the years that I've been out here, whenever you try to get trending data for, you know, what the membership's going to be like down the road, no one ever really has a great answer, and I don't think they've been correct. Do these companies that you're talking about, look back, like it's the same thing I want my weatherman to do, you know, tell me what you predicted last month, and did it actually rain or not on those days? You know, if you predicted stuff, do you have 10, 15, 20-year, you know, reports that say, you know, we actually were right about the trends that we thought these communities were going, because I just wonder if that's a, if anyone goes back and holds them to it, is it accurate data? And I recall that, it's been a couple months since I looked at it, Kelly Thompson, when I spoke with her, who's the superintendent in Mesquite, she says it was helpful for them to look at it, and to analyze it and so forth. I mean, they were in a similar situation to us, they were closing an elementary school, they were insulating schools down, a much bigger district, but they were in a similar situation as we were, but they just, that was a morbid, it was possibly done before the referendum piece, so, there's different tiers, if I remember correctly, even with, working with the lab, of what they're looking for, and what all we want, and there's prices that come with that. We'll have to bring that back to the board, and run that by you, and see if that's something to be interested in, what that timeline looks like, for them to get the data, and then to analyze it, and bring a report to the board. Any other questions for Tollfer and his report?
I do have a question, what, annual meeting, what are we looking at for timing of the annual meeting?
Didn't we set that at the last annual meeting?
Did we? What is the date?
September 25.
September 25.
With policies.
Okay.
It's working.
Yeah, okay.
Unless the Packers are reminded of football. Then I might go short. Okay, so you don't need any-
All right. Last year, we had the regular meeting first, it was a very quick one, and then we had the annual meetings. Is that how you want to proceed this year?
Yes.
But will it be as quick? With us meeting only once a month, it just seems like we might have a, because that's going to have our third Friday count. I just can't anticipate that being a short meeting. We'll have gotten all the third Friday counts, it's that September meeting.
We, we won't, those won't. That's, that report is due to DPI in October.
Okay.
Because there's a lot of pieces within, I think, Opal accounts, all the open enrollment in and out. So all that has to be put together by the business office and then submitted to DPI by the very beginning of October. So I don't know if we'd have definitive numbers on September 25.
But for our attendance, didn't we say we're going to hold our attendance boundary conversation based on the numbers from third Friday count?
We'll have enrollments, yes, not membership, sorry.
I'm still-
I think your membership too, sorry.
Right. I'm just thinking, is that a quick meeting?
Yes, and I have the same case.
He's doing it on the right-hand side.
Yeah. I guess we can reverse them. Have the annual meeting first so we have the time. I guess we have to publish that, so we have to get that out there pretty quick. What do we do, a 6 o'clock meeting, a 7 o'clock annual meeting? Is that what we did last time?
We did it last year.
I mean, Carrie makes a good point. There's a lot to talk water on. And is it, we could also go into our first meeting in October and make that a scheduled meeting. If we have too much stuff to talk about, we can do that, and not make that a committee meeting. We can make that a regular meeting if we need to have more time. I don't know, I guess we have to decide that right now. I guess we have to look at how much stuff we have to talk about. I mean, that elementary attendance discussion could be short, it could be long. Were we locked into having that discussion? Did we tell everybody we'll do that? I guess we did. Everyone was expecting that at the end of September. I guess we should reverse them, start with the annual meeting, get it over with, and then we can stay as long as we need to.
If it's short, we'll have to finish it earlier.
So let's just do that. Reverse it easy. That's a good point. Okay, do we need any motions or anything?
Yeah, there was a motion to approve the use of this estimate at the annual meeting.
Do I have that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. So we have our annual seclusion restraint report. I presume Suzanne is bringing that to us.
So this information, this is for information only. The district is required to report seclusion and restraint data annually by September 1st to the school board using data from the previous school year. So this is data from the 1617 school year, including the number of instances of seclusion and restraint. So we had zero instances of seclusion and five instances of restraint, three at Woodview Elementary and two at John Hawn Middle School. The number of students involved in the incidences was two, and one of them was a student with disability. And then, I also gave you some, a five-year historical data, where you can see from 2016-17 back to 2012-13, what those numbers were at the elementary level and high school level each of those years. Staff is trained in nonviolent crisis intervention using the CPI model. And we do emphasize de-escalation techniques using what we call a decision-making matrix to assess risk and severity of harm in case a crisis does escalate to risk revenue. Physical intervention is used as a last resort. When staff determines that a crisis is entering high risk for harm to self or others, that is when physical intervention is used. Thirty-seven staff members were trained over the summer. There was one session held in June, one session held in July, and the last session was just held last Friday. And there's been really good feedback on the new content that staff is being trained with now.
Is that a yearly training order that?
Yep. So staff has to be trained annually, and as an administration team, we're going to decide if we're going to do refresher training. That has to be done at least annually, and then how often we want our training to be held, and that's something that can be decided. Each organization can decide how they want to do that. But yes, some, the refreshing, refresher training has to happen annually.
Is it all staff or just a certain number of?
So I had asked each principal to give me names of people they were putting on their crisis intervention team. So the law states that we have to have at least one staff member per building trained in nonviolent crisis intervention. And so, we have crisis teams. And so, today, I just emailed out to principals, who, the 37 participants were over the summer, letting them know who can be on their crisis teams because they have the updated training.
Any other questions? Okay, thanks, Suzanne. And finally, we have a construction update.
Yes, so we've sort of heard multiple construction updates in our conversation, sort of piecemealing some of those things. And it is, because it is flowing into a lot of our SCO. Whether it's about budget, or whether it's about the school year, whatever it may be. A couple of things we want to emphasize is that, starting, so tomorrow at 4 o'clock in the district loft, we do have our bid package number one. Those bids will be looked at, so that is open to the public. Board members are welcome, please welcome to attend. Hoffman has received all the bids, received the bids last week, started with our owners' meeting. They received the bids, they are vetting those bids to see, they're checking to see that they, they're going through every bid package to see that they check all the boxes that we have them accomplish. And each one of those has, some of them have bid on multiple parts of the, of the project. So they're also vetting to see, are they able to, do they have the capacity to accomplish all the things they bid on? If they were to be given multiple pieces instead of just one, are they also able to meet our timeline? So that's another piece as well with our accelerated timeline, keeping our costs down. We also need contractors, companies to be able to meet that accelerated timeline. So they're vetting that, they'll be bringing those recommendations. They'll bring the bids with them, a little bit of a look at those. They'll make a recommendation to us, and we'll be able to ask questions and to be able to select from that. So that's, and that bid package one, I think, is about 30%. Jamie?
Thirty, closer to 40%.
Thirty to 40%. I think is what they said of the total piece, maybe with the early construction pieces, it's probably closer to 40. So tomorrow, the bid package, looking at that. It's exciting to start seeing where those bids are coming in at, and then start to look at our budget for that. So that's going on, that's going on tomorrow. And then, starting the week of September 11, we will begin having weekly site meetings with the construction managers. So at the owners' meeting, they had the gentleman who will be the site manager at Woodview Kennedy and at the high school. And we'll start having weekly meetings in that construction trailer with the principal, Tofa, Jamie and I, and talking about various things. You know, one of the things we talked about this, this week, or two weeks ago, our staff was, with the construction, just different security and things that we're doing. You know, we're requiring all staff now to wear a badge. So you'll see all staff wearing a name badge as they come in, as visitors come in, we're having them wear something. Hoffman or the contractors, they will also be wearing a name tag so we'll know that they are supposed to be on our sites. We're emphasizing our drills, what we're doing with that, all those types of things to make sure that we keep everything safe for our students and our staff throughout this whole year. And so, those are the pieces that we're emphasizing as we move into this. There's an emphasis on our security, and those site meetings will help us with that. So that instead of, you know, well, it's nice, it was raining this morning, let's have a fire drill this afternoon. There's not going to be as much of that because we're going to have to, um, plan with the construction company of when are they in that area. Contractors are all being told, if there's an inadvertent fire alarm or there's an emergency and kids are out, then they immediately stop what they're doing, and they wait for the site manager to work with the principal to see what's going on there. So we're keeping student safety at the utmost with that. But those, those weekly meetings will allow us to plan, okay, next week, we're thinking of a fire drill, what are you doing to this time? We're doing this, sort of planning those things out, getting updates for the progress of the different things. And as you're going, moving into the foundational pieces and so forth, excavating, they're saying, after the bids tomorrow, they're hoping, if not by the end of the week, but early next week to start excavate, we'll start seeing excavation occurring at our sites to sort of get those footings in before we get frost in the ground, to get everything enclosed as much as possible. Jamie, do you have anything else to add to that?
I don't. Okay. Then I will look for a motion to convene a closed session to consider employment of a public employee over which the board has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, and deliberate or negotiate the purchasing of public properties, investing in public funds, or conducting other specified public businesses whenever, business, whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. This is in accordance with Wisconsin State Statutes 19851(c) and (e). Do I have that motion?
So moved.
Second.
You need to say yes out loud.
Yes.
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 Yes. And we are in closed session.